...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Are we meeting to order or do you have agenda?
I do.
I'll take a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry. Approve the minutes, seven eighteen.
A lot of stuff going on here, but uh through the elections, this looks right, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, carry. General public concern. Okay, got anything? Okay. Ben. Europe.
Morning.
Morning.
Early in the, we're four minutes early.
Right?
The first item that I've got on the agenda is the hearing to vacate Kentucky Avenue from C forty-nine's right away north, just under a thousand foot, to Dave Stockdale's location, for his, his home residence. We walked through the proceedings according to Iowa Code three oh six with regard to establishing vacating county highways. We've got, what Dave, nine of these?
Mm-hmm.
Dave's been doing most of the work on these. We've got about nine of these throughout the county where they had a portion of them that was vacated many years ago, and now basically runs to a residence like a long lane. And we're trying to clear up a lot of these. This one's only thirty-three foot wide. We talked to Stockdale's in the past. He ends up moving most of his snow himself because his wife's got to get to work before the county gets, gets there to move it. Uh, we talked to him and he asked that before we do this, that we rock the road one more time, so we did that this summer.
Okay.
As far as I know, nobody's filed a claim for damages on this.
Okay. Okay.
I just had the one, I thought it were, just wanted to, I don't know if they have any questions or just curious to...
No, we have an issue with, because there's pens there in Stockdale's property, and we have one in North Bees, and we're glad to show you guys, so it shouldn't take anything to make it correct.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to be here and have some interest in the process. Unless you got something to do.
No, I suppose I should have looked up the three oh six, but, so what happens for that road? You mean it gets... So, the, the road gets given back to the adjacent property owner. In this instance, there's no right of way taken from your side. Everything was taken from Hawk's side and Stockdale's side. So, when the road gets vacated, it goes back to the adjacent's property owners, so for this thousand foot, a portion of it goes back to Hawks and a portion of it goes to Stockdale's. And then they've already got an existing easement between the two of them to share the lane back and forth, uh, so Hawks can get to their Ben's side and Stockdale's can get to their acreage.
So, we have to set a date then, or what?
No, I think you just have to act on it.
Act on it?
Okay.
I'll make the motions to vacate Kentucky Avenue from C forty-nine right away north, nine nine three one eight six feet, and court township section twenty-seven.
I'd second that.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
The second item on the agenda is one that I brought to you guys tailing in last week, uh, to approve agreements associated with the ag drainage well closure in Avery Township, sections nine and sixteen. This is the one that runs by Adam Lubinfall's place and dumps in, I don't remember which drainage district it is off the top of my head. It dumps on the south side of one hundred and eightieth street.
Oh, shit.
Eighty-two?
It's way up there high.
Just to the right of your thing?
Thirty-four.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, yeah. It come down and it, yeah, wherever that road, where's the road at? You can see the trail. See, you see the trail there?
Here's the trail to the corner.
Where's the trail? This, this straight line here is the trail. So, much done in here.
It's further, it's further right, it's right there by you.
Right here, Rick. That's sixty-two.
Sixty-two, excuse me, it's not eighty-four, it's sixty-two. Yeah, right here. And then the ag drainage well is going to dump in a similar location, and then a little ditch type thing gets it over to where it's going down towards zero.
Yeah.
So, this is an agreement for reimbursement on road ditch maintenance, basically because this is a private title, we're treating it similar to, if it needs any maintenance, it falls back on them as landowner.
The property owners should clean it up.
Yes.
I believe in the grand scheme of all this, what do you say, well, sixty-two? That, that this is a private, as you mentioned, private, uh, they are going to see if they can't establish a, uh, agreement with the district when they get this done.
They want to turn it into a main?
No, no, but the private's going to remain private, as far as any maintenance on what we're talking about now.
Oh, okay.
Because it also obviously benefits sixty-two, because it's the same outlet, so, but that isn't going to concern us, that's going to be a, the district, and then they're going to, between the private and the district, in fifteen years from now, it needs to get cleaned out, probably be the expense between the district and the private landowners type thing.
Yep.
So, no, it wouldn't concern, they just have to say, hey, we need a permit, we're going to clean it out again, something like this, so.
Uh, we got, uh, open agreements with us, that's what we're concerned about, so I'll make a motion to approve agreements associated with ag drainage well closure at Naverie Township sections nine and sixteen.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
Third item that I have on the agenda is to approve the hiring of Jordan Richardson for seasonal part-time winter health, starting at twenty dollars an hour.
He going to have to be trained?
He's worked for the DOT for the past five years moving snow, so he's trained in the truck. What we would need to do is probably get him a few hours in the maintainer as well, uh, with Brian being off over in the Hardy Territory, uh, as well as having a part-time route in the Humboldt Territory. Both of those would be blade operators, so, between, I'd say between now and when snow flies, but that looks like tomorrow night.
Might just get educated.
We've got a couple of guys that can operate both machines, so we'd find one of them to run the blade route and put him in a truck.
So, you're saying mostly out of Hardy, between Hardy and Humboldt?
Between Hardy and Humboldt at this point.
I'd make the motion to approve the hire.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
The last item that I've got on the agenda, um, this one that we talked about last week, is to review and possibly change the current Humboldt County driveway policy. What we had last week was what we've come across, most of the times that we have to reject the driveway is because of a line in the driveway policy that limits the number of driveways you can have in a quarter mile. I guess my recommendation would be to remove that limitation, since we have to reject it, and then we bring it to board, and to my knowledge, the board has never rejected one, different number. It, it seems trivial to me, I guess, that we have to reject it just to turn around and get it approved later. Then we'd like to increase the driveway credit dollars from two hundred and four hundred to three hundred and six hundred. Three hundred for removal of the driveway on a gravel road and six hundred for removal of the driveway on a paved road.
Yes, just to help entice getting rid of the old ones.
To help entice get rid of the old driveways on paved routes.
Does that have to be in conjunction with them putting in a new driveway?
Yes.
Yeah, they go, they can't just remove and get it checked.
No.
And get it checked, yeah.
Just double checking, just, no.
If you will, we will hold it. But we will hold the credit.
Oh, I see. So, they want...
Well, you'll make note of it, and if they put one back at the future time.
We wouldn't listen.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think, you know, you still may end up, I know it creates this headache for you guys, uh, but it is nice to remove an old one where applicable.
Yes.
And it is nice to, you know, not have as more driveways than you really need, so I don't know, I mean, I think you're always going to have to look at it, you know, always ask the question, hey, you putting in a new one, and a lot of times you do remove the old ones, don't you?
Right.
I mean, just move it to a different, better location, tear the old one out, I would highly agree with bumping up the credit for them.
Yeah.
You know, like it's...
And I, and I really think when the guy says, geez, I can knock three hundred bucks off, he'll, he'll, I actually take some of them old ones out.
Well, there's, there's quite a few driveways out there that are narrow enough that basically you can put a pickup in.
Yeah, that's about it.
Because equipment has gotten larger over the years, you need a larger driveway.
Yeah. Gary's got a question back in the corner.
Do you realize with this larger equipment that we're getting, how nice a driveway is to pull over when you meet somebody? A lot of times you gotta pull over to let them get by, and you're looking for the first driveway, why are we paying to take them out? What are they hurting? When they can still be used. I, any driveway in, in existence should never be taken out just for that purpose. This equipment is just getting so big, and then what do you do? You meet them and you get over on the shoulder, you're hard on the road, whatever, but on for all the driveways, and the trouble is, we need more, bigger ones.
And they, it hurts the snow, making it all go?
No. The, the larger the driveways, the, the higher chance of getting frost oil in the location.
Ben, I've got ten driveways that are one hundred to two hundred feet long. We never leave a field with mud in parts of assembly and driveways, we rain stop both the trucks, we never block the roads, we need to make driveways wider, I never have seen a frost oil on two or three driveways, that don't hold water, at all. You show me one next time, because I've got ten driveways that are a hundred feet long, I've never seen...
That's how Mr. Spring was, there was quite a few frost wells out there.
Yeah.
But I appreciate, I appreciate letting on part your equipment in the driveway as opposed on the road.
I've got pictures, but I couldn't find them, I was going to bring them up.
Case from a lot of places this year.
I will say in conjunction with that, if we do allow more and or longer, wider driveways, to please utilize them as such.
Right.
Because, Gary, I have seen some of your equipment parked on the roads, uh, I know if I wasn't a field that you had the big driveway on. And a lot of other farmers too, they get a part of the road. And I agree, having, where applicable, where it doesn't create problems, and I've been out with Gary before, and he said, this longer driveway is at the top of the hill.
We go ahead and put them in on top of the hill.
And so, to alleviate, if, if this is all done reasonable, there should not be too much of an issue with all this driveway business.
It's not only for the farmer, it's for the co-ops when they're spreading fertilizer, for the manure haulers.
We see too many, yeah, we see too many fertilizer things parked on the road.
These manure tanks, when they meet one another, there's, they just, that's hard, that's what's hard on your roads, and there was just an incident out of Gary Benson's one hit over in the field, screwed up the tank and the tractor big time because of the meeting on the road.
And I'd say that Ben and Dave, when we're talking driver removal and extra credit for that, those, these are not, these are not big usable driveways that the people are going to...
No, I mean, to Gary's point, they don't have to remove the driveway.
No.
We're just off, we're just offering a credit if they do.
I just don't know why you want to pay somebody to take money.
Well, I'll tell you right here, this is for just how to let the next guy by. My, my opinion on these old used driveways, some people have a tendency to drive in the ditch occasionally, and when they get hurt, it's because they hit a driveway. So, we get rid of some of these old driveways, I know it, it's not a happen very often, but we did have an occasion in Humboldt County where we had a lot of legal expense because somebody hit an old driveway that had been in there for forty years and never been used. So, if we have the opportunity to remove some of these driveways, I think it's a good thing. Because the new ones we put in, got the good channel slopes on, people go in the ditch, they don't roll their cars, they end up coming back out, that's, that's my reasoning behind it. Sure, they're great to have them for pulling over, but if that little twelve-foot driveway, you can't pull your combine into that anyway.
It's enough just to get over.
Well, it does help, but I, I think we should have put that out there for the people that want to get rid of them, I think it's a good thing for us.
Yeah, they aren't going to tear out a, a relative new fifty-foot.
No, some, some are nice, but they can be...
No, these are all, these are all old twenty-foot wide driveways with straight walls on either side, and they're usually the ones that we remove.
I agree with Rick's point, and another thing, if you've ever looked to, sometimes those old unused driveways are screwing the drainage up some ways you could perform too, because if they had a pulver that was junk, if you get rid of it, you can improve, keep your water flowing, if it's flowing in the ditch where it's supposed to be, so that's another benefit of, you know, getting an old structure out of the way.
I don't think we're taking thirty-five a year old, are you?
Yeah.
I mean, one of... No, we're not thinking about that. It's really slowed down now, I mean, it's, our driveways have really slowed down.
What do we think out of here?
Yeah, but then they put ten back.
I was going to say, then you're doing...
It's widening, the other ones, we're putting new ones in.
Correct, right.
And making them more correct.
Flatter, yeah, we're flattening it, trying to make it safer for any part of the ditch.
Yeah, and we usually, I mean, I've seen a couple of it, you guys did this one, uh, from, I think they were both just basically improvements on existing drives, they were the old cruddy ones, and they were just built to a fifty-foot driveway.
Extensions.
Yep, and nice job, farmer was extremely happy because, well, it's both on, you know, gravel roads and bigger equipment there again, and not a safety factor with a narrow driveway, you can't get in and out of it. So, it was just a, but then I guess in this case, there wasn't a removal, it was just an extension.
An extension.
You know, had he, you know, decided maybe, I'd like to put the driveway in a completely different spot, that one that was extended probably would have been torn out, but it just would, add to it, make it wider, like he, for his safety and convenience, but yeah, you wouldn't want to negate that option, and he'd have been thrilled, actually, it would have been his landlord, who was paid for it, would have been thrilled to get the three hundred dollar credit.
Right.
To move this driveway, so, I think that's a good idea, and I think bumping the cost up is beneficial, because, and it is a cost savings too, if they take that and build a new one, takes less trips and fiddling around to get the new one built.
Right, it ought to be a case by case, you know, look at every one of them, use your head. As far as removals or as far as...
At the bottom of the hill or in the middle of it?
No, I think you're referring to putting new ones in.
Yeah, putting over ahead and...
Which, I mean, I remove a whole, every single one. Well...
What is, what did you want us to take out, Ben?
I'd like to pull out the...
Number eight.
Number eight, the limitation on the number of driveways that you can have.
Then you're going to add the one to three hundred and then to others?
And we'll, we'll change, uh, we'll change the dollar amount for the removal of the three and six. And we're still going to limit the amount they can have, obviously, not to allow...
All right, well...
So, the cases are different than others.
It's still going to be kind of a case by case situation, and I don't, I see where you guys are coming from, but, uh, if the permits are flowing down, is it, does leaving the language in there at least keep the discussion open so that, is it, you know, make it, so you're looking at the case by case?
I agree, it's another trip for you, doesn't it, basically? And I think, I'll leave it up to you guys' judgment, I'd make a motion to drop number eight off our list here, and change the numbers on number five to three hundred and six hundred, and then we bring this up for conversation in April at our five-year review and talk about maybe making wider driveway stipulations. For some of the people who want to have hundred-foot driveways on the top of hills, which is, I think it's a great idea myself, get these guys off the roads.
Yes, I do too, where applicable.
Where it's applicable, I think it's a fine idea, so.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carry.
That's all I have.
Okay, we've got a question for you, since we're getting ready for snow here this week. Is there anything in the contract that says they can't go out four or five in the morning or get on the roads?
Uh, our current snow removal policy right now, states that our regular hours of operation are from five AM till four PM. If we want to review the snow removal policy, I would say that that's something that we put on the agenda. I know I have talked to quite a few adjacent counties, the only county that's running at four AM is Webster. Everybody else is, doesn't start till five AM, and a lot of those counties start at five AM with trucks, but don't start till seven with patrols.
What I'm thinking is, you know, if they get out there before traffic hits it, they'd come off the road better, and then before the people go home, you know, in the afternoons, clean it off again if they have to, but, uh, get out earlier, they'd come up the road, we would have less complaints.
The issue you run into is, uh, that puts our foreman out at two o'clock in the morning to run roads, to check to see if they need to call the guys out, then at three AM, they're calling the guys out to run at four, that gives them an hour to wake up, make their lunch, and get to the shop. Like I said, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I think if, if that's something you guys are all interested in doing, I would put, to remove these, or to, uh, to review the snow removal policy, and possibly get my tree foreman in here that can explain to you guys their, or, or their mornings, you know, as far as, right now, they get up at three, or three-thirty, and hit the roads, by four AM, they're calling their guys to be there by five.
Well, one, thankfully, even in the nasty winters, this doesn't happen every day.
Right.
And we hope never, but we know it's going to. So, you know, uh, and another thing too, I don't, you know, I'm not the road foreman, but I could probably get, and I know they have to get up earlier to get out earlier, but it isn't going to involve a twenty-mile drive to figure out what the conditions are.
Right.
So, I mean, I think it's a pretty quick decision, I mean, if everyone knows this is a possibility, and they're just kind of expecting it, they know when they go to bed if there's a possibility, you know, so go to bed an hour earlier. But yeah, if we don't do this, this has been an ongoing problem that we've had for years, where the snow is packed on the roads and...
We got so many complaints last year.
Because we have a lot of traffic on the road between four and five AM?
Well, it's because the compaction on there, if you see the Webster County, if you go in from Webster into Humboldt, you can tell a, a visible difference, and you saw the pictures, we got a lot of them there.
I saw one gal.
And, um, if we can alleviate any problems of someone coming from Webster, if they're starting earlier and there's no, you know, you get that on and you pack it down on the road, you don't want any possible chance of accidents or anything like that.
The problem there is, if you're talking like, Brad, you're blacktop out here, we have white top, they have blacktop, and the white tops will not fall off as quick. If you don't have blacks underneath, they clear off quick.
That's true.
Which is a very true statement, but if you're talking about a fresh snow event, and it's, like Sandy said, the sooner you get it scraped off, the less problems you'll have with it melting off. If it's packed on there, on black versus white, that's a very good example, yeah, it's going to take longer, let's get it off of there so we don't have the issues. So, they do have to start earlier, they start earlier.
Most of the compaction that you get on the roads actually happens after the guys quit at four o'clock with everybody heading home. I mean, it's not the early morning, it's, it's the late, there's a lot of traffic between four and five AM.
Yes.
Well, I would say the Claire Blacktop is probably run down, uh, with trucks cutting across through Claire to go to both ethanol plants, I'm just looking at the weather forecast. The, uh, probably forty to fifty trucks are sitting in Fort Dodge at five, or six o'clock in the morning, so if they cut down through Claire, that means they're on our blacktop going across to the Claire Blacktop.
Yep.
So, by six o'clock, they've already got fifty trucks run down there, you know, Pro sends ten trucks down there and ten owner-operators, um, you could have that much easily, that's why that thing is, just gets pounded, and it's harder than concrete to try to get it off, that's my opinion, I, I just think we should start a little earlier, get it cleaned off if they're done by the afternoon, send them home, we don't have to stay till four o'clock, do we?
That'd be an additional change to the county policy, and again, Webster County is the only county that does that, and that's the road superintendent, which we don't have, that makes that call to send everybody home.
I'm just, the, what the weather forecast for tomorrow says the...
Snow late in the day if I...
Snow late, well, first rain, hopefully that's snow, I'd rather see that.
Snow right away, yeah.
But they're talking rain, changing snow, which one to three inches late in the afternoon, which then the following day is up to five.
I'll put the, I believe it's ordinance number ten on the agenda for Monday.
Yeah.
About blowing snow, you have to worry about that, if you hours come out early, and then I go to work and the roads are broken again, so you went out early.
Well, it depends if they have the language that we send the guys home, who's having their eight hours, I mean, if they go out at four AM technically, they're allowed to leave at twelve-thirty.
Yeah, their day will be done. Okay, so, huh, Webster has a road superintendent, we don't, who makes those decisions now that, you know, something needs to be done, something needs to be changed, who makes that now?
Me and the foreman.
Okay, so then basically, we really do have somebody that makes those decisions.
As, as far as sending them home, no, nobody makes those decisions now, they show up at five AM, they work till four PM.
I mean, just general road issues or making determinations of what's going to happen and what's the timeline, and who's going to do what, who makes those decisions?
As far as going out and removing snow, the guys do, I mean, the, does the foreman go out and they run at four o'clock in the morning, call the guys?
But who has the main response, what I'm trying to get at is, who has the main responsibility of the secondary road crew?
Who answers for their pros and cons?
And makes decisions?
Me.
Okay, so then ultimately, we do have somebody that can make this, that decision if we need to, correct?
To run early.
Who is able to make that decision, those decisions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we do have somebody, so it isn't like we don't have anybody that can't make those decisions.
How about if we have a workshop with the foremen in here?
Yeah.
No, that sounds good. I, I'm just going to tell you now, you're probably going to piss a lot of guys off if you're going to take all of their overtime away.
That's what I was wondering, I might already asked that question, um, there's nothing in the union contract that says we, they have to work till four.
No, no, that's all in the snow removal policy, all it says is that their standard hours of operation are basically from five AM to four PM, uh, only under life-threatening emergency, or will our guys go out later than that, which we have, I mean, law enforcement has called and said, you know, look, we've got a, a nine-one-one call.
Didn't we have that last year? We sent a truck out with two deputies?
Yeah, we had lizard conditions, and we had quite a few vehicles that were stuck out on the road.
We sent somebody in front of two deputies.
Two guys, we had... Two guys, we had, I think it was Jeff George and Mike Carpenter that were out running, if I remember right. Yeah, basically leading deputies to strange motorists.
And there's, there's a few days where we get that heavy snow early in the morning and the wind ain't blowing to clean the roads off and they could go home at noon. But there's a lot of days where there's any kind of wind blowing, they still got to be there till four.
Yeah, Warren Island wind doesn't blow that much.
Very calm.
You know, it's probably not going to affect very many days, right, where they would send them home early because there's, you know, but...
Usually there's always something to do.
That's right.
I mean, once you've done the initial snow removal, chances are you're cleaning up intersections. You know, you're, right, if the wind does die down, they're doing maintenance and service equipment.
You see, we wear them blades out on the bottom, but after what, two or three days? It seems like we were changing...
The trucks that run on the, on the concrete, they blow through blades pretty quick.
Right.
For the first couple of years.
I just, I think David has an idea, let's talk to him. I don't think we're willing to change.
We'll schedule a work session whenever it works for you guys and we'll have the foreman in.
We're not asking for, you know, we're even betting the wheel here.
No, we're not trying to cut overtime or anything like that, well, we could, we could save money, but, you know, I think we need to get out and get it cleaned off a little sooner. Let's have a workshop with them, maybe after the next meeting on the second.
Okay.
If we're not snowing yet.
It's snowing.
Whether, depending on the weather.
Depending on the weather.
If we get in here, we'll get their ideas, their thoughts.
Do you want to do it up here or do you want to meet up at the county shed after the meeting then?
I think they could come here, if we could have, if it's a reasonably short meeting, I mean, that's what we're talking, is county policy. If we got to go in this policy thing, um, I think that's fine, it shouldn't take long.
Looks like we're down on the agenda towards the end of the week and set a workshop, get it done, so they're going to come in. Unless it's snowing or something like that, whether...
We're saying it's snowing, nine to three, nine to three, Monday? Monday's just a nice day.
There you go.
So I'll be coming home in snow, great.
Get a half a foot and I'll stop for two days.
I'm not a road operator or a truck operator, I could probably do it if I had to, but, you know, I don't know all that stuff. These guys don't know all that stuff, so let's get them in and get their thoughts on it and the idea of what's going on.
Agreed, it's a good idea.
All right.
Can you say, "Thank you, man"?
Thank you, Ben, yeah.
You too.
Thank you. Good to see you, Dave.
Thanks.
Stop in more often. All right, moving on, getting on.
I'm just asking if the foreman approved the statement of the mobile home taxes on the property that the, um, Springvale obtained through the district court because the property owner was, uh, currently behind on their rent there and they're behind on taxes. And they, um, took ownership of it and got it resold and, uh, current on taxes.
Springville, where are you at?
Springville Landing Cattle Holdings, um, Mobile Home Court.
Oh, up here.
I was thinking up by the hospital. I'm trying to think, where's the, where's the lot of mobile home at, up by the hospital, all right.
They're the cheaper units.
Yeah.
All right, now I'm good with you.
A mobile home, it gets us onto the circle with, um, delinquent, they went to the district court to take ownership, ownership of it and then got it resold. And the individual brought the current year taxes of current, but the prior year taxes are sitting out there.
Just one year?
Actually, it's two, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen, plus the BOLA building a lot of another for the parcel that had the shed or a deck or something. They're talking three hundred and sixteen dollars in taxes for two years and a hundred dollars, thirty, a hundred dollars. A total of four hundred and fourteen dollars of mobile home and real estate taxes that need to be eliminated since the previous owner was negligent and kicked out and...
They have their owner of it now, right?
Um, the, they actually got resold and the new buyer brought the taxes current, for the current year. And in the court case of the way, the ICAO's, the plaintiff, which is Springvale Landing Cattle, had the right to get rid of the previous owner and either demolish and move the mobile home or resell it. So they found someone that would take care of it and keep it current and now they have two years of taxes, but nobody's...
And that's a total of, you said, four, both years?
I got a dumb question. When I buy property, I always got to bring the taxes up to date. Why don't these people?
The court ruling is kind of vague on how that happened.
You got it to the mobile home, you mean, or what?
Just the fact that they were given the, or awarded the property because the guy was not, the individual was not, um, keeping up on anything. What do you, rent to those individual utilities and everything were behind. So they awarded it to them and, um, it's probably not a very livable property, but they found somebody that...
Yeah, they resold it. So we actually were debating this, talking about...
I mean, I've bought some pretty crappy houses too.
Have you?
And I had to pay the taxes.
You're not going about it right.
Evidently.
You need to get a lawyer. Uh, so baiting is basically the Springvale company?
Actually, it was, uh, probably all of them.
You're right, but who was asking for...
Yeah, who's asking?
Yeah, who's asking, because they, they, some, now someone owns it and paid this year's taxes on it.
Right, and he said he would keep those current. So I guess that...
So who are we actually doing the favor for?
I assume it's the prior owner, because he's the one that owned the property at the time and...
And so if we don't invade the private owner, which we won't, the first owner, so which we won't get a penny out of.
Correct.
They won't go after, they won't tack it on to the Springvale taxes.
That's, they awarded it to them, to the district court and it, it doesn't really, when I talked to John about it, that's really...
Throw the taxes in, all right.
Why is that?
Because you have to sell it at profit. If you sell it at profit, then it goes back to cover the cost of the rent and the cost of taxes.
So they, they just inherited this.
Got rid of it.
They, they didn't actually even have to pay for this property, they just awarded it to them.
Right, through the district court.
And if you say that they paid a penny for it and that it's a property, so that's why they, I don't know how the legalities of...
They own the property, they're just the trailer that sits on it, right?
Right.
Okay, they awarded them, they ordered this building that is on it.
Yeah, because you rent that, you rent that lot, correct, you rent the lot?
So it isn't the lot, it's just a trailer.
This is the mobile, mobile home tax.
And if they had demolished it, then everything would be gone, so I guess we're a little bit ahead in the fact they found the buyer that will keep the tax.
As long as he pays the taxes.
I mean, okay, there really isn't much we can do about it.
With that?
Till the next time.
I was going to say, because this, hope it's not a vicious circle, do you see this very, or have you seen this? You have seen it?
I'll make the motion to, yeah, abate the, um, delinquent taxes on the mobile home.
All right, I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
Some of them get caught and sold two or three times in a year, they keep up with it, live in there. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
This next one, uh, DD ten, I think we can do that without going into drainage, can't we?
I think it has to be in drainage.
What about this resolution?
The resolution?
Prove resolution twenty nineteen nineteen to transition CSS to one employer.
So basically...
Yeah, what does this mean?
What this means is, um, D and, I think D is our only one, isn't it?
Yes.
D is our only, Dee Stern is our only Humboldt County employee that works through county social services. We, county social services always reimbursed Humboldt County for their wages, their benefits, and things like that, correct?
I don't know, Dee always turns all those claims in, so I'm not sure what we're...
Well, and so that's how it used to be, so then, then we, then CSS would reimburse Humboldt County. Now it's, we made the decision as a board, the twenty-two counties, that CSS is going to have, um, all the employees be under one employer under CSS. And the reason being is every county has different policies, different handbooks, different days off, different medical benefits, different, you name it, there was something different. So we wanted to have more continuity and more, uh, all, everything all together under one umbrella. So we have to basically transfer employment and terminate Dee as a Humboldt County employee effective, um, well, here at December thirty-first. And then she'll be on January first. She'll be a CSS employee. So basically it's just a transfer of, of employment. And then plus the liability, Dee would go on a, a business transfer, you know, whatever for the CSS. If something would happen, the county is not responsible for the liability, it would be under CSS.
All of it?
So I make the motion to, um, approve resolution, uh, twenty nineteen dash nineteen to transition CSS to one employer.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry.
That also transfers all the furniture to all the, everything that's there will become property of CSS.
I was reading that, but I thought, is that their stuff being with us, or we just give away all our furniture?
Yeah, some of that is too. So that was bought with CSS money.
Can we switch before we, we send the motion, go up and take their good stuff? Well, I don't...
Okay, moving on.
Do you want to do the claims before you...
Yeah, let's do the claims and then we'll get...
I'd love to. Claims, I had, uh, sixty-seven thousand one three-three point oh-four and no drainage?
No drainage.
We better hurry up and sign that quick.
No, before it changes.
I'll second Bruce's number.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Carry. Now, I have a motion to go in drainage. I'll go in the drainage. I did. All in favor?
I did.
Both?
That is really hot. I wasn't ready for that.
Paying attention, I don't want to, you got to admire it in the normal, I set it up.
Just an FYI, I drove out by, uh, I need one though.
Oh, I, I, I gave you, well, gave you my, my car off there, sorry. God dang it, you screwed up my turn.
Um, I drove by the...
Your garage today too?
Yep.
So...
All right.
Thirty-five, I think, I think that it has, uh, back on my...
Oh, I've been thinking about that.
I drove it down, down into the field and it looked like there's fresh dirt and the corn stalks, so... But John, when I talked to John Norman, he said he thought it possibly, it looked like it was off the line of the main tile. So it might have been one of the, where they were crushing. So he said maybe it was on the old pipe, pipe that collapsed, so he said, I'm hoping that'll be an easy fix. It wasn't a very big hole, so...
All right, in the drainage, DD ten, review and approve extension for the completion. I guess, uh, Peterson's asking for an extension on that.
They, uh, I don't know, was there a date on this someplace?
November first, it says, at the time.
For the night out, right?
No, uh... I mean, a date that they were supposed to be, a mess to have a completion on DD ten.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't look like it, but...
It was for this fall.
Yeah, and I've talked to Rick and Travis, and DD eighteen is a huge, huge district that they're working in right now.
There's a lot of FEMA work up there.
They know, they've done a lot, they've, they've got quite a bit done. They've been shut down a couple times with just the weather, because part of this is clean out, water goes up, you know, like this path this fall, can't do that. And, uh, so they, you know, honestly, and...
And they've also been busy trying to do their farming.
Well, yeah, Rick did that, I mean, they kept that just pretty well.
They were, they were doing good.
But they got to, you know, and things as you go along, this massive length of ditch, uh, I, this is just one example. There was, I don't know if it's a half mile, it, it's less than a mile, but it's just a spur, if you will, that comes off the main ditch. Well, that was just basically needed complete clean out. It wasn't a spot clean out there, where they'd been doing spot clean out, like Rick said, fixing the FEMA, everything's moving on pretty quick and they got there. And they said, if this makes no sense, we either have to clean this out or just leave it be. Well, you're there, you're cleaning it out, there was an extra ten days, and that was when the water came up. And it was just, been a struggle like everything else, so that's kind of the reason is their, their slower progress than they would have liked on DD eighteen. It's pushing back this DD ten.
But their letter doesn't really ask for how long their extension, does it? Just like an extension on the completion date for the entirety of DD ten due to many weather delays.
Yeah, there's no date.
I was going to say, what is a reasonable extension?
Well, I don't know what the original...
It's not going to get done this year.
Okay, that's what it is, yeah, so this year...
It'll have to be extended into next year.
Next year.
It's very questionable.
Would be the first extension then for that?
Yes, yeah, we don't, there's no date from when the original was and to what we're moving it to.
That's what I'm saying, we can give them an extension, but we really don't know where we're extending from to.
Trish would have those numbers, but we don't have her. Should we just table us for, do we get those numbers, or do you want to...
I think we can give, obviously we can give them the extension and then maybe we can get more detailed...
Yeah, we'll talk with Rick and Travis and see what they're, what they're looking for.
What the realistic timeframe is.
We, we need to have numbers on our motions so that it's recorded properly. We don't just say, here's an extension, Lord, you know, was it two, three years, twelve months?
Right, so you want to make a, we, the granted, you grant the extension and then we'll put the dates in later, or you want to just table it and forget it?
I think, I think we can, we can table it till next week and then we can get their dates put in there. It's not like they're, it's pressing.
I would agree, yeah.
All right, that works.
Because they're not going to get to it this year anyway.
Yeah, that, like I said, it can be a little more detailed, so at least we can put a date on the extension.
Well, get Trish to give us what the tentative date was so that we know what we're extending it from and to.
Yeah.
What the timetable would be.
And perhaps, in the meantime, which would be a week, we should touch base with those guys and say...
Unless you just want to give them a twelve-month extension here, I'm not too worried that they're not going to get it done.
Right.
No, and like I said, that's why I wanted to mention, I know the reasoning is the project of eighteen. It's not like they, uh, weren't diligently trying to get to this, they just hung up, so...
Can we keep this simple?
We could.
I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion to give them a twelve-month extension on their current, uh, completion date to complete the project.
I would second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. There, that also saves...
Saves a lot of hassle next week for the same person.
Well, I hope, next time we had something like that, we would have had that on our...
More details.
More details is the when it was supposed to have been completed versus when, kind of looks stupid.
Okay.
Training process.
Most of them go on the drainage.
Are they kind of new at doing that?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Carry.
Brand new, you're... The kind of new and the business aspect of all this. Do you see, I mean, how long have they been doing this?
How are you doing? Randy, how you doing? Good, thanks for your patience.
Oh, no problem.
He's only five minutes late.
That's all right. I appreciate you listening to me a little while this morning. I'll try to make this as painless as possible, but, uh, I've been doing this, uh, this zoning administration position for about ninety months now. And, uh, I, I've gotten a lot of information, I've learned a lot. I don't know if you can teach old dog new tricks, but at least I got that.
Well, at least the old dog's still able to learn something. I don't know if we're teaching you, but you're learning.
Well, and, and because of that, I, uh, I've got some information that I just wanted to give you. I don't think it's anything that, uh, you know, you need to act on or anything like that, but, um, just for your consideration, uh, from the information that I have, uh, gotten from, uh, from those times that I've, sometimes I scratch my head and go, mm, mm, mm. And usually I do that, I call Dave, and, uh, appreciate your help in, uh, in clarifying things for me, so. Uh, but anyway, I'm gonna give you these bits of, uh, information and so that you have kind of an idea.
Oh, thank you.
Going to, uh. Stand up, huh? This'll give you a little bit of an idea of what I'm coming from here, I hope.
Thank you.
My purpose here is basically, uh, I wanna provide you some information. Kind of at the end of the year here, uh, so maybe at the beginning of next year, you know, I'm trying to provide for myself and also anybody that wouldn't come after me, some basic processes and protocols that would be helpful. And so I wanna create some communication, uh, general communication to the public in requirements, and also try to increase some efficiency. In operation, it's not bad now, but, uh, you know, try to increase some efficiency in my operation and also in how things can be completed. And also, uh, improve some accountability and, and recording of, of information. And then also to increase some, uh, identifying zoning classifications. So I basically have four, uh, four things that I'd like to accomplish giving you this information. And if you look at the first page, that's basically, uh, some things that I wanna discuss. The first one, animal confinement building permit requirements to be included with the required DNR permit, right, as, as I understand it. Right now, if I'm a landlord, I wanna put in an animal confinement, I, I'm gonna have to go through a very extensive DNR permit process. And, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so, uh, and I talked to Dave about this. In that process, okay, that's a permit via DNR. Now that landlord is probably gonna have a couple of options, the way I understand it. They're gonna complete that complicated matrix and all those things. Or they're gonna probably require somebody to do it for them, right? Which certainly makes sense to me. And in that case, the landlord, uh, really is completing their obligation with that. But in our sense, we really don't have an actual county permit. Just a one-page, you know, permit. And, and so we discussed that, and then we also discussed it at one of the Board of Adjustments meetings. It was brought up that they, they thought that this had been taken care of. If you look at the next two pages, and this is what I refer back to, on ordinance sixty-five and sixty-six, they do talk about requiring a permit, but it's not clarified of basically what type. And, uh, it, it's okay, uh, the procedures down there, uh, that's okay. But I talked to Brian Scow, who did this before me, and we concluded the both of us, but that's okay. And it is on record here, but it's really complicated to have that record also going to the assessor's office. They have, they know that there, there's been a permit and permit approved, okay? So I guess what I'm saying here is that it would be a good idea, in my mind, to have both, okay? Now that can be done in two different ways. Very simply, if we get a permit from the DNR, I would just contact the owner and say, we'd also like to have you complete this for our records. That would be the simplest way. Or you could also change the language in the ordinance. That's not as simple.
How about we go with option A? If you had the ability to do that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Let's just.
The only thing was, when I, when I looked at this, I just, I thought, well, you know, if I'm a landlord, I could maybe interpret this differently. You know what I'm saying? So, like you said, the simplest way, that the zoning administrator can probably take care of this. The only other thing I looked at, if you look at the next page on, on the ordinance number sixty-six, I thought I would bring this up as well. Under definitions, it tells you, uh, what the livestock confinement operations acronym is. But there's also some that are down in the listing down below that. And so those acronyms are really not listed in the definitions. And so if I'm, you know, just somebody reading this, I'm not sure, I'm not sure even I would understand all of that. So I don't know how all that language was created or what it, what all meant. But it, just bringing it up to your attention that maybe that's something that, you know, could be changed or should be changed. I don't know. But, uh.
That would have to be changed on this ordinance?
Yeah.
To put that in?
Yeah. Because, I mean, as being Joe, you know, whoever, Joe Smith out there, that, I don't know what some of those things mean, so. And I don't, I'm not saying it has to be, I'm just trying to bring it to your attention, uh, for that, so. Yeah, exactly.
Most of the, most of the ordinances, if you look at.
Like MMP, and then there's N to DEF, I, yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't know.
So if it was spelled out. If it's spelled out, it'd be more clear.
Right.
Either you spell it out like you did the one.
Yeah, but everybody knows what CAPEL is, but you not everybody knows what NPDES is.
Exactly, and they should've done that same thing on after those. Do you know what they stand for, Peggy? Those acronyms? I guess, I wasn't paying attention to it.
That is.
I didn't read them. I was just curious, it's on, um. Oh, okay. E, uh, E, yeah, D, number D after operations and E, or not number, alphabet, D and E. E I do, MMP is your manure management plan. Okay. But I don't know what NPDES is.
Hmm, natural. It's a natural, it's a DNR.
Yeah, would've been nice if it was spelled out.
It would be, I agree.
Cause I don't know, I did bike the tree all day.
And really, I don't think that, that would, that would make your order exchange, too. This has been tanked out.
Yeah.
I mean, anyone changing the language, you're just.
You'd have to have another hearing again.
Would you?
Yeah, any changes to an ordinance of any kind that you make, even if it's to clarify it.
You always have to be.
I would take a guess, I would take a guess at that, and I don't know if I wanna.
And it's not a, you know, big deal to have a hearing.
No.
No, cause I mean, how many people are really gonna, you know?
You'd be amazed when you rattle this, this little.
Or I have a idea. I mean, just find out what the word acronym is. My guess is it's manure management plan.
We're just clarifying.
Well, I didn't know what MMP is, but I don't know what he is.
I'm just saying. NDEES.
NDEES is National Pollute Discharge Elimination Program. Water pollution regulated by point sources discharge pollutants within the waters of the.
On, on those lines, yes, there you have it. I got that, it's a bigger question that Randy's, I think, alluding to, but I wanna ask. Bolt boards, haven't you? Over the years?
No, I'm on the Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment, excuse me, that too. Are we, the county, getting the permit for the confinement buildings prior to them doing it, or are we getting it after the fact, once they've started the permitting process with the DNR?
The one that I've been involved with, I was contacted by the person that the owner hired, I'm assuming, to do the actual DNR permit process.
So you got it.
They contacted me, I met with the DNR person from Mason City and the person that developed.
Someone like Suxton, uh-huh, has that business.
Right, right.
We're number two, they contacted the DNR first.
That's what I'm saying.
That was the only contact that I had, and I don't see a problem with that. Just at that time then, it, it, to make the simple part, is, is when that meeting would take place, the owner was not there, but the person representing him was there. And so I would just say, the simplest way would be to say, we'd also like to have you for our record capability to also include the county permit itself.
Yes, and I think that's.
I know, but part of the reason why is because by doing it the way they do it, that is done, and you can, if the permitting process started, as opposed to they bring one into the courthouse and then people talk in the courthouse, and then pretty soon it's leaked to, well, your neighbor's thinking of building a.
It's a, yep.
And then pretty soon you got people arguing before they, they haven't done anything.
Right.
I know that's part of the.
All I'm saying is that just for win-win, cause if we keep a file, you know, in the owner's office, I keep one. I have that county one, uh, and the assessor's office now, cause they're, they drive by and go, hey, wait a minute. We don't have a permit in record here.
Right, right.
Which is happening to us. Um, so now at least they have it. It's just for recording purposes, yes.
I agree. Cause you can't change, obviously, that gets into the master matrix and all of the acronym things that we don't understand. You can't, you can't change that, cause it's state mandated. They do that, they don't, they bypass the county, basically, and never.
They can come in here and put a building up, and we'd never know it, as long as they stay under twenty-five hundred and.
Yeah.
They put one with twenty-four nine ninety-nine, they're legal to build it, and we don't even have no say so ever.
And I think that's what Randy's driving, at least you have the permit.
Right.
So you're aware, you know that it's going.
Right.
And if you can accomplish that with your protocol, I say do that.
Yep.
I don't think we need to go into ordinance change. Uh, we got our technical wizard sitting over there, anybody can look up an acronym.
Right.
And, uh, I, I say that.
My only concern was that is Joe Blow out there doesn't understand it, but.
The part of the Joe Blow being, if it's a Joe Blow that's gonna build one, he saw it to somebody, they understand it, he's right on it.
Or the, or the person they acquire to do the.
Well, they, they understand all of it. And like Bruce, or, excuse me, Bruce and Rick mentioned, they do contact those type of people to help them with the permitting process.
We do have a verbal agreement with Iowa Select, and if they're coming into the county to build one, they will let the supervisor know. Yes, Prestige does not. Prestige throws them up any old place and don't have any contact with them whatsoever.
But someone like Randy's able to at least know from the get-go that they're doing it.
Yeah, if they notify us.
Yeah.
And it's either notified by the, somebody that represents them or by the owner. It would be nice to have just for recording.
Yes, I agree a hundred percent.
But it's obviously no fee for that permit or anything like that.
But it's just the head of the game, and like you said, getting it to the assessor's office instead of after the fact. It just knows.
But if they don't contact you, then there's nothing really we can do even to the permit, right? If no one contacts you, now, does the DNR usually get ahold of you or someone?
The only one instance I have, yes, they contacted me. We have on record the entire, uh, report, uh, and they have to then determine.
So have you built up a relationship with the DNR that they'll do that in the future too?
I've met the guy once, so, and that was.
And they only have like seven or eight guys.
I know, that's what I was wondering, yeah. I mean, you know.
Next time, it could be somebody.
If he's busy, it's a guy out of Spencer coming, you know.
Okay.
One way or the other.
So I don't see any problems with that at all, just my bringing it up as recording, so.
Well, I think a lot of this is just your due diligence and keeping track, and we appreciate it, and.
Well.
So just, I would go that route.
Expediting and efficiency is, you know, like you said, after the fact takes longer than being proactive. Any other thing, question on that one?
No.
Okay, on the, on the second, newspapers, zoning and building permit, uh, public notice changes. There's a sheet right here, looks like this, and it says what the current public notice has been in the paper. And it's been my experience, and also with, uh, the people in the auditor's office, that this probably, uh, is not adequate in the fact that it's not. It's not real clear as far as building permits. You notice the top, at the top, it says zoning permits required. People read that and they go, uh.
Not me.
Yeah, so, and the rest of it is, it's okay, but it doesn't really give a great deal of detail. And what I'm finding out, and I'll refer to this a little bit later, what I'm finding out is ninety percent of the time, people are going, oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know I had to have a permit. Well, I didn't know there were setbacks, requirements, you know? So it's not a matter of bad information, it just, I'm just saying, maybe it should be improved. And so the next page, and it says draft on it, is what I've come up with, and I talked to, uh, Rick Chris Nicholson. We looked it over and thought, here's the things that maybe we would want to have in there. And, uh, I'm actually naming the ordinances that any of these would fall under. And these would include building permits as well as, uh, zoning, uh, special exception, zoning situations. Because that also, most people don't realize.
I like it, change it. I mean, it just makes sense, your, your explanation was excellent.
The only two things that I would have to clarify here is, and I undermined it, all permits are required before building or use changes. I think that's extremely important. Yeah, like you said, a lot of people change the use of the building. And one instance where a gentleman called and said, I found out that I need a permit. Well, I'm starting construction tomorrow. Would he?
He knew it by somebody or figured it out.
Or, or somebody started working and somebody said, hey, you got a permit? And he said, I, no, no.
Bruce.
I would've taken it care of, you know, he was very nice.
I just know people have a tendency not to read an entire thing, so if that's something really important, I think you need to move that up. That's only recommendation.
Well, I have the word, I have the word required right there, but would you like to, would you like to move that up?
And take, I, I was saying, you say, and get the most important things first.
Get the most important things first, and then fill in with your other stuff.
The ordinance numbers and stuff more at the bottom, but it pertains to this ordinance, but you have to have it regardless.
Right, so, yeah. So, and you can still have your required in there and then have your all permits are required before, but you know, that again, that's kinda like a, this is your.
Same like Tyler that wants to call to see if there was fiber optics that he just managed through. It seems sparks, but I really wasn't paying attention.
The other side there, the, the bottom paragraph is basically what was in it for.
Right.
As far as the contact information. The only thing, the other item that was not in the, in the original, any violations of these ordinance shall constitute misdemeanor resulting in possible fine or imprisonment. That comes from article, or ordinance number twenty-six, under violations and penalties, which I made a copy of for you to take a look at if you'd like. Basically, it's stating most specifically what I have here, but, uh, and, and that can be removed or kept in there. Uh, I, my only thinking was, maybe that gives a little bit more credence to what is said there. Because I had, I've had people that I, they say, well, I didn't know I had to have a permit. And I explain, you know, what the process is, and then I say, uh, in the ordinance, it does say there can be penalties, you know, under a misdemeanor. And then they're kinda like, oh, okay. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if that can, I, I have no preference of leaving it in there or taking it out. I'm, I'm just.
Well, it's kinda like, well, I'm doing my disciplinary and administrative charge, and you always put that verbage in. May result, you know what I mean, it's just, you just do that.
Yeah.
So you know that this is, this is the real deal.
Well, that's, I mean, obviously, no one made that up, Randy found the ordinance. It's stated, because that's why you have to have permits.
Yeah.
There's also, you know, like Bruce mentioned about digging inadvertent holes without, you know, getting locate, for example, indoor permits, which would be neat, the same difference. There is consequence.
Well, truthfully, if you do a, plant a tree in your yard, you're technically supposed to. You know, because you hit to your phone line, it's your own phone, or you hit the neighbor's phone.
Yeah, I mean, I can, uh, put a deck up and you can dig a.
Yeah, I mean, I can go up, put a deck up and you can dig a four inch hole and you're gonna hit that wire every time.
Yeah.
And you couldn't find the wire with a wrencher, no, you couldn't find the wire.
I took up the whole yard looking for it, but you know.
And Randy's been really good, I think, with, uh, if somebody con, and we had this session way back when, when you started, but just, ahead of time is always better, because you're knowledgeable on looking at the situation. It's for everybody's own good.
Exactly.
It's not, you know, the, what are you, people are, who are managing government regulations, well, they're already there, you just have to follow, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, there's not gonna be a problem, and you're there to help them, not be tough on them, so.
And clarity then is just what we're trying to improve there.
I like that.
If you publish the one that's been published, like you can't sit there, you publish that one, why not the next time publish the twenty-sixths?
Publish those with, in that same one or with?
Well, publish that one one time and a week later publish this other one.
Well, you almost have to publish them together.
Both together.
That way people say, what's, what is twenty-sixth?
Oh, there it is right below it.
Twenty-sixth is just part, then it's just a piece of twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth is like forty pieces.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
That's just article seventeen, unless you wanna publish this.
No, no.
This is just article seventeen of-
I think you just make mention of that in, in your notice.
He'll say, wow, we're gonna have a big paper.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Nice, smacking a bunch of people, whatever you guys need, you know.
I'll have, I'll have to work on that.
There's Kent, always thinking about the-
Yup.
Okay.
I just blew my butt in the street now.
Chris and I have talked about this and that's why, um, we thought maybe that'd be a good idea, okay?
Okay.
Uh, there's also in your packet, uh, just as a, uh, I guess, I gotta- Uh, in my process of listening to people, and I talked also to the city administrator here, if somebody obtains and gets an approval on a permit, I would like to make it, um, I would offer them to have some sort of a sign or something like that that they could put up at the site, because what happens is sometimes people call up and go, hey, somebody's building a building, do they, do you know about it? Do you, what is this? Or I've heard this, you know, and so I'd even make it mandatory, but it would be offered, some type of page like this, they could put it in a, uh, you know, weatherproof sleeve or whatever, could attach it to the building or post it, something like that, so if somebody drives by, has a question, it says there, this has been approved.
The county city does that, they have a, a slip that says that you've got a building permit to build.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, 'cause there's a lot, a lot of neighbors wonder what the heck's going on here, and then they're just stuck there on the, on the light pole. Or she's with, she's with text.
Yeah, well.
At least we have offered to them, to help them out and maybe-
And haven't, haven't been plastic.
If the meddling person sees something and, oh boy, I'll bet they're doing that and they're gonna have a permit, and they have the permit, just save that all.
There's, yeah, some people know what's going on around them.
Yeah, and they just, oh boy, what can they go?
I think they know.
I think that's a good idea.
The other one, the next item is code verification, and the only reason I, I put this in there was because if I go out, do a site visit, that might be the last time I look at it, unless I happen to be driving by it, you know, so, for this one, if nothing else we would have that the site has been completed, we would ask that the owner would then bring this back in so that can be inserted into the file and say that it has been completed, I put in there also if, like for electrical plumbing, those kind of things, if they have somebody else do it or if they do it themselves, they simply state what code you have followed and that, and yes, it's been followed, get signed.
I would think it'd be awesome for the person, if they ever wanted to sell it, to-
Oh, look at that, hey, hey.
Here's your, this is Adam Smith, and I'm using Stevie Plumbing or Lloyd or whoever.
Yeah, they can have, they can have a copy of this as well for their own purposes, as well as we know where they've completed and, and, you know, somebody is writing off and saying, because what happens is you're not just protecting the people that live there now.
Right.
Or using the property that are now, you're trying to protect people in the future that maybe would purchase that. And if they see that, they've got something that says-
Verified.
That's the end of the point, yeah, it's recorded that, plus they have to do this anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, if it's a code that needs to be followed, you have to follow it, this is just verification with their permitting and it's recorded, and I think that would be great, because people run, next down the line owners sometimes, they run into problems probably because of lack of what was done when it was built.
And in many cases, the homeowner, which is, you know, they can do, uh, the property owner, and so they do the work themselves, but it isn't being any codes.
Right.
Or do they know what that is?
Right.
Yeah, when we were buying a house, we looked at some places and I'm like, oh.
Oh.
Not quite as much, not that they're probably gonna change it, but at least, you know, they could choose not to sign it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, I mean, that's just-
I don't think it's a bad deal.
No, I think, anything we can do to help.
Yeah, number five on my list, permit violations, we do have some violations as far as buildings have been put up without a permit. And we've had a few, the assessor's office have contacted me with, uh, four, four or five, I think, and I've contacted those people and the majority of the time, like I say, they're saying, oh, I didn't know.
You didn't realize?
Why didn't I, you know, and they're very nice about it, and I explain to them what they need to do, and that's not a problem. I've had one that's been kind of questionable of, you know, what the situation was there. But in my ordinance, in talking about the, uh, the violations and with those things that are stipulated, my question is if we do have somebody that decides, the heck with you, they don't cooperate, they don't do anything about it, it's very detailed in what the fines would be or what the, but my question is, who then enforces that?
Well, you would show them the, give them the ordinance twenty-sixth.
Right.
And I imagine it comes to us and then we'd send the sheriff out, either to collect the-
I just didn't know how that-
We have to follow up with John, because if somebody were to ask me, well, what happens now? And I'm going, you know what, I don't know right now, so, I just want to-
Back to the supervisor, supervisor goes to county attorney, they'll get a letter on it.
Yeah, I would be there to play.
That'd be, that'd be the process.
Trying to look ahead a little bit, just to, you know.
Yeah.
So, the last item on the list, there is the county zoning maps, I've had a couple of situations where people inquiring about classifications of a zoning area, as you probably well know, the zoning maps are not.
Someone brought that up a while back.
Been talking about that for six, eight months, you hear? I think we need to get ahold of Midas, I think they've got the maps down there that we can have them draw it up and get us a new county map.
Well, each, each of the townships, of course, have, on those maps are zoning classifications, but they're very difficult to determine. Now, if we have it done by somebody, I could possibly even try to do a, or do, uh, an area view and actually create something that would also do that. If you want me to try one, I can try it and then present it to you, but if it needs to be done by some legal operation, that's fine too.
I think Midas done them last time, if I'm not mistaken, right? Did Churchill come up and take and do a full county map?
That was those little teeny ones that you could hardly read.
Yeah, you can't hardly read them.
No, and I did inquire one time through Midas, and I don't think they have anything clearer than that.
Okay.
So that's my good thing.
So we need to get somebody to-
I did check with, um, Schneider, um, thinking that Schneider would be able to put maps together for us, um, got no response from them whatsoever, that's probably been a few months ago.
Who's Schneider?
Beckett Schneider that does all of our aerial photos and does our books and our mapping, yeah. So I really do not know who the contact to see about doing this.
I just turned, I ran into a situation where the property, the parcel was obviously residential. But on the, on the map, it was very difficult to determine, was that actually a residential area or was it commercial, whichever was all the way around, and virtually you couldn't tell on that.
I think that's the whole thing, is it's probably not the, it's the border, it's the adjoining areas that are right next to, you know, whether it's residential, is this, you know, and, and out on West River Drive, they've-
That's one of the biggest areas.
Yeah, right, they got homes down along the, down along the river, but when you go north, then you can have multifamily dwellings, they've changed that, and then you can also have-
Commercial.
Commercial on the north, or on the south, no, it'd be on the north, excuse, so it's like, that wasn't the way it was when it was all gonna be residential, but if they didn't sell them, then they've changed the thing to make it sellable.
The alternative that I thought of would be if you have, uh, within a township, you could do it on a database situation and each parcel could be listed, and what, what district it would actually be in. So like I said, I own a certain parcel, I could look that up, or if, if somebody calls, I had a, uh, you know, a person from Fort Dodge calling from an appraisal company, uh, what, what is the zoning for that particular parcel? I'm looking, you know, so even if you get a database of what those parcels are and where, what they are, that might be also, uh, favorable in helping to identify, even if we didn't do the maps, redo the maps, that might be a simple way of doing it, but that's also gonna take some time, that'd take a lot of time.
Well, somehow we have to do that.
I think maybe we oughta turn this over to the assessor's office.
Yeah, they have that more-
They'll get their maps, so.
They have to have the zoning for each parcel that they access, so I would check with them and see if they can come up with a zoning map.
They're getting the right track, dude.
Say we need to have a third guy.
They have a better copy, could you visit with the assessor's office?
Sure, I'm, I'm just concerned also about the, reading those maps is almost virtually impossible at some level. Yeah, so if you did know, that would be, that'd be great.
Well, with the mapping system, there are two of them around, if, I think we've got, they've been there, they should be able to come up with the zoning map, I probably find out, so if we can get them.
They need to have on file what it's on.
I would hope so.
So that'd be the location to, when you need a map, when somebody says parcel, you could go to the assessor's office and get that note, definition.
Maybe this information already exists?
It's already there, we just gotta go to the assessor's.
Well, I can go to the area view and I can pull up a parcel and I can look at the report on it. But like I say, it might be labeled as residential, which this one was.
On the map.
But on the map, no, on the description, on the report in the assessor's office, it said residential. But on the map, you couldn't tell, and this is where Bruce is discussing out there on the golf course area.
Yeah.
Okay, obviously it's residential, but on the map, it looks like that whole area is commercial. You just can't tell, because the color, the colors, even if it is a colored ones, there's black and white and there's colored ones, you just, it's just not detailed enough. And there's no, there's no really streets labeled, there's no tributaries or rivers labeled, and you're trying to figure out what is.
If you're looking at the original plat out there, there's a park out there.
Oh, really?
And there's a park in the, behind those ri, those homes, there's, uh, like, a block and a half north, um, there's a little area that they're gonna have like a-
A playground.
Playground, playground park area, which, you know, if you ever, if it ever get, I don't know if I'll ever see it. I'm beginning to wonder if it was these streets or-
Right, 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 on West River Drive, on the map, you could tell that that part was residential.
Right.
South of the, south of the, on the, on the golf course itself, you just couldn't tell.
Right.
And so, just for clarity.
Well, I just know that with some of the buildings that have been put up out there, they've asked, didn't know we can, well, that's the way it got changed in order to spur development and to have some buildings out there.
Then you need to know whether it's residential area B, single family or multi-dwelling.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I don't, I think we should move forward with it and try to get it, be a lot easier for you to try to.
Mm-hmm.
Expediate, uh, and efficiency of my time and, and it's not that I don't wanna do it, that's, I don't, that's not a problem, I'm just trying to think for-
I agree.
I think it's a good idea.
I think we should start at the door.
I don't know.
The only other thing I'd like to say is that after doing this for nine months, I really appreciate the office people here, uh, Dr. Peggy, the great team that they have, and they're very helpful, uh, they've asked, answered a lot of questions for me, and Dave has, so I, I really appreciate that. I try to report to you on a monthly basis kind of what has happened, and I'll continue to do that if you want me to.
I do.
Yeah, I like it.
If there's any other changes or things that you would like me to do, please let me know and I'll, I'll try to do that, but, uh, and I will be gone for a little while in January, so, but I'll still have-
You aren't coming back with a sunburn, are you?
I hope so.
But you are, good luck.
But, uh, anyway, uh-
That's a good time to be gone, 'cause there's not a whole lot going on.
I don't think you'll get a lot of permits again.
And it came up, we had an opportunity to go.
Good for you.
Thank you for being so diligent on this, bringing things like this to our attention.
Yeah, no problem.
And, yeah, the monthly reports are nice, because if we see something and this doesn't make sense, we can ask you then.
Yeah, and, and at least you have some idea that, you know, whatever happened, you know, I try to give you just a brief description, you know.
I think everything you presented makes a lot of sense, and I think we move forward and make a few changes and be better for everyone involved.
Do we need to put these changes in some type of agenda in the future, Peggy, or what, we can just enact these?
Um, really, he's just here giving us an update, so you don't have to take action on it.
No, I know, we don't have today, but I'm just saying, well, well, we need to in the future if we were to enact something like these permits or, you know.
I don't, I don't think so.
I think he could do that because he's been involved.
He has the ability to do that, I didn't know if we could, we had to say, okay, we're, we're good with the, with this permit application.
Or a new ordinance, yes, then it would come to the guy.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't drop it when Mark got to go.
The main one right now is, I think, is the public notice.
I, I agree.
And I don't think you need to, anything on that other than change the public notice.
But you know what, you look at that, it's been in the reminder since I was a kid.
Oh, no.
So when you, when you're thumbing through the reminder, you look at that like, oh god, I don't need an application, I don't need a permit. That's the reason.
Yeah.
And then we find out we got a machine shed that was built, or we got a addition on the backside of a house or a little, well, it's just a shed.
And that's even just the head of this, we're throwing back to you how many people actually read through all of it.
Right.
The head of it, yeah, I'm trying to make sure that at least I go, oh, wait a minute, says building permit, I've been reading more about that, that was, that was my own.
Yeah, yeah.
Bruce, I don't need a permit. The other guy needs a permit, not where I, I'm out in the middle of nowhere, I don't need a permit. Let me do that.
That's why we find the machine shed, yeah, and we send you that Dodge pickup pretty young, because I wanted a machine shed there last year.
And giving the sun right now that I'm gonna have to make site visits on, the buildings have already been built. My concern is if they built them not in-
Compliant.
In compliance. I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, I'm just saying that's, that's another-
Setbacks and things like that.
Yes. I hope that's not the case.
Oh, we do too.
I'll be glad to do an interview with you for the paper beyond, you know, just above the public notice. I think that would be a good-
That would, that'd be great.
Maybe they'll read the article better than the news.
Small news, yeah, but it's kinda hard to make county zoning sexy, you know.
Yeah. Especially with this old guy.
Please, Kent, we appreciate that.
That's a entertaining headline.
As long as I'm in. Thanks again.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Keep the posters on the one up.
I will.
She's got, they built the forty miles of land.
Yeah, I will.
All right.
Another property, yeah, should be, I think it'll be okay.
Okay, well, if it gives you more static, let me know.
No problem.
We'll visit with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. All right, moving on down, uh, committee reports. All right, move on down, committee reports.
I didn't do a few miscellaneous things last week, but I didn't have any official extrapretoria meetings, so I have really nothing to report official meeting wise.
All right. I spoke with Cindy from our Three Rivers about the wellness program they're pushing.
Yeah.
You cannot opt out. It's either all in or all out.
Well, this is one insurance.
Yeah, the insurance, it's pushing. I asked her questions, and she had no answers. I said, "Well, find out the answers."
Yeah.
I asked her, "So, we're going to pay $2.98 per employee per month, where does that money go? Who holds it?" "I don't know." So, well, okay, they said, "You're going to get, you're only going to pay for fifty percent of your, you're only paid fifty percent if your employee doesn't meet the goals." "How is that money refunded, or how does it come back to you?" "I don't know."
Wow.
There was just a lot of "I don't know" is one of the questions I asked.
Did you say, "No, sir, we don't like that?"
She got the impression I wasn't comfortable with the program. So, I think the meeting is February fourteenth and fifteenth.
The normal insurance...
Normal, and that's where it will be discussed on the fourth day.
And we will go.
And then it'll be voted on on the fifteenth.
But you're the lifetime representative on that.
I know. And they don't, they don't like me sometimes because I...
That's why we...
Because you're on the right track. I don't like it. I know that, I think it was you yourself that expressed that concern when they were talking about it last week, and I don't like it.
Well, she thought probably Blue Cross Blue Shield holds the money.
Well...
Or they...
I think Blue Cross.
And whenever, whenever somebody's holding money, there's always administrative costs in there.
They charge you for holding the money.
You know? And we've already started our own wellness program. They told us, "Go on, you know, you do this, so do it." And now they come up with something else they're going to charge you for.
Yeah.
They're going to try to mandate it.
Mandate it, yeah.
I don't agree with that at all.
So, that's my...
I think you're on the right track of saying no.
Keep saying no, if they're... Yeah.
All right. Um, I did attend a championship football game for my nephew this week.
I love it.
Yeah, it's a big...
That took precedence over my journey to meet a guy.
Which feels...
Brett West Hancock.
Was that eight man?
No.
Is that class, okay.
So, it's very exciting.
Awesome.
Good.
Did they win it?
He didn't get the winning hardware, right?
Yeah, he did, he got the...
Lineman of the...
Award of the game.
That was cool.
It's my sister's brother's boy.
Sister's brother's boy.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had to tell you that he kind of looks like the kids. I mean, he has the, that look.
Yeah, it was fun.
It looked like a good game.
First, fairly first stressful game we've had all season.
Well, those are, that's a fun couple of days to go on.
It was, it's great. And that's all I have to say. Down Creek, I think Grove must be a world beater. It's kind of like, seems like everybody they play, they kind of...
Right.
...
On Wednesday, I had Humboldt County Ministerial Board, which led to quite an interesting conversation on our food pantry.
How'd that go?
Especially with the, well, the development of this post office and, and getting that, the city getting that, but there's some interesting facts that somebody's going to have to have it. It can't be owned by a non-for-profit, which we are, because it was given through the, you know, the dollar deal in order to get it back on the tax roll and all. So, I guess, long story short, they're looking for someone that could, you know, because every, every penny that the ministerial association has, they want to put into food, or they want to give away for, well, you know, they got a pretty good deal with us because they don't pay rent, they don't pay for the electricity, the, whatever. So, we're trying to, one of the ministers is trying to work with Travis to see what we'd have to do, what hoops. That would still be an awesome building for us, but whoever the person would be that would own it, you know, they'd probably like to get some of their money by someone paying rent to them. So, we're kind of scratching our heads when we walked out of there, wondering how that's all going to work out, so, but we see where we're at. And then on Saturday, I did a little drive out north, thirty-five there, because one of the farmers said there was a hole, which I think possibly, I haven't got it, I haven't got him calling back, but I'll check.
Is that done now?
Pretty much. They got most of the stuff out of there, there's still one piece of equipment up there on the north end by, between dials and one hundred and ninetieth, so, but it really looks, looks nice. They'll get the rest of the dirt worked, leveled, and probably the ditch finished, and I'm guessing they'll probably be out of here. We need to make sure Trish gives us a guideline for the, when we bid that job, what year it was. Because that seems like it was what, it was almost two years ago.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It was, because it's supposed to be done this time last year, so it's a year late on that completion.
But anyway, I expressed that to her last week, get us a timeline, so we have that when we're all trying to figure this out. Dial said he'd be willing to visit with us once he gets done with all of his stuff. So, I think we're getting closer, so that's all I had.
All right. Tuesday, I had Kitty Cat daycare, and we were given copies of Cityskate. They did a really nice article on daycare, so what's in there. I brought, got a couple of copies, if anybody wants them, Mr. Rive, we can keep it here too, just to kind of showcase that. Things are going about the same, nothing really new to report on that. And then in, Wednesday, I was in Grundy Center for kind of social services stakeholder. It basically was just all of the providers and talking about what services they want to do, and then also Bob Lincoln and a few of the other ones about things that they want to, what our initiative is and what we want to work on, and then we'll vote next month on what we want to really put our efforts into. And a lot of it's going to go towards the, I think, working at the, because we still don't know what guidelines and things like that for the children's part of it, because the state mandated that we have to take care of the zero to eighteen now. So, now it's trying to figure all that out, where we're going to, where we're going to go. But we're under budget, which is a good thing.
So, did Webster opt out then?
No, Webster, oh, yes, Webster decided to stay.
Well, we didn't get the good news, but while we went on the bad news...
I'm sorry, I, you know, last week was kind of crazy, but anyway, no, they chose unanimously to stay.
That's because you put a lot of heat on them.
With the arm.
But, yeah.
That's good.
We appreciate that.
Well, it wasn't just me, it was also Carl.
Yeah, it was just somebody.
We all really came together and, you know...
I think it'll work.
It often didn't come to their senses.
Thank you, yeah, it was, I still don't quite see what they, I don't know if they were just trying to make a point, because they are the biggest county in the quad, they're the third largest of the region, you know, so they do put a lot more money, but...
Population wise, they probably have a huge population portion of it.
Yeah, and right, and they get...
But you also have the most to gain.
Yes. Well, that's what we were trying to make the point, you know, why would you not want to have this access? And as they were talking about, you're going to have people that are staying, that's a long-term center, so you're going to have people staying there, so you're going to have family members that are coming up, so your hotels are going to be busy possibly for the weekend, you know, if they can come and visit, you know, and things like that. I mean, there's just so much that would have benefited them, not, not just the, the good care. You know, besides the good care, there was other things that would have helped. But the meeting was really good at the Grundy Center, because a lot of providers that did the services actually showed what they gave us, county wide, what they did, and Webster was right up there. So, yeah, so it was good. So, they, the thing about not getting numbers really was kind of, you know, that's all I had.
Okay. Monday, I followed up on the ditch up here, and we found out exactly where he's stopping in. That bulkhead that he was talking about, full of dirt, about one hundred and fifty yards from the north ridge, and did you get...
I talked to Brian personally, and obviously, like we said, that nothing had been done there. He was very, you know, adamant about getting there and getting it done, and so I, and I don't think he was making that up, he understands he's got to get out there, do some leveling and some looking, and they said, "Let us know." Unfortunately, with that and everything else outdoor related, we don't like the sound of this weather, and that's a rough...
Pretty, pretty soft out there right now.
So, yeah, I did, Dave. Thanks for looking at that.
Wednesday, the twentieth, I had a PASMAT meeting, Fort Dodge. The new truck will be here hopefully in January or the first of February.
Oh, wow.
There's some of them going down to take a look at it here next week, I believe it is. But she had, April had pictures of, in stages of being built, because they build everything right there at their plant, the engine they've got there, the chassis, they had the body, they showed it before, and then they showed it painted, and they're still working on the back half of it, the rear ends under it, the frames there, and it's kind of interesting. Officially, we accepted three resignations, one from Wright County EMA, one from County EMA, and it was Calhoun County. We accepted them, we had a good discussion, and stuff there. The twenty-first, I had a board health meeting I missed, because I ended up taking Sandy down to Fort Dodge. Also, Thursday, the twenty-first, I had a dog meeting. We discussed the board, the building a little bit, and decided to leave it as is, because we could change it later. The inspector was up and showed her the diagram, and she made a couple of suggestive changes, but that's not going to stop the building from being built, it's only on the inside.
Interior.
We might have to isolate one of the first, one or two kennels.
Yeah, you got an isolation room.
We got an isolation room, but we might have to use that for one of the kennels also, so, but we can change that after the thing's built. That's about our way ahead.
That could be one of the topics for ISA, would be the EMA, and, oh, that's mandated by the federal government, and it'd be interesting to hear, you know, because we really have no say, other than the fact that we have to have that position filled or covered by someone. Every county, ninety-nine counties is, it'd be interesting to listen to down there someday.
Nice talk with Rick from Wright County. And I'm going to bring it before the EMA board when we have our meeting. I guess Dan has talked to him about Butler EMA, which is the president of the EMAs for the state. He might come in and make us suggestions and help us out a little bit on it. Wright County has hired a full-time one that would, they would be willing to share with Humboldt County, split the cost down the middle and everything, so.
We're working on that.
Good work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Peggy, you with anything?
No.
Nothing?
I wonder you're so quiet today?
I'll make the motion.
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to mention something.
Oh.
This is an official business, but, you know, we all deal with things, and we all, you know, know most of it, but I am personally extremely saddened recently, the passing of Joel Haines. He was our head beaver trapper, and somehow I was elected beaver's all of Humboldt County, but he was awesome to work with. You know, we have all these drainage issues, and that was one of them, getting rid of beavers, and he did a stellar job. It's a very sad day today, it's his funeral this afternoon at the St. Joe Catholic Church, and I went to the visitation last night, and obviously, it was one of the largest visitations I've ever attended. But, so we're missing now an integral part of our drainage work. Got a couple of guys that I think will carry on our beaver trapping, but I just wanted to make note that we're going to miss him dearly in that respect, and just as a great person he was.
Person, yes.
So, that's all I have to say.
Jonathan, supervisor, one time.
Okay. I got a motion and a second to adjourn, our favor.
Aye.
Oh, carry.